Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Worcester School Committee meeting, our first meeting of the year. And we are going to call the meeting to order. If you can, can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem? And the National Anthem is going to be sung by Angelo Gray, who will be singing the National Anthem. He's from, is he fifth grade at Nelson Place, I believe?
Aye, Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes hand bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rackets were glittering. The bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Okay, let's take his lead tonight and have a good meeting. Great job, Angelo. Appreciate you being here again tonight. Thank you. Roll call.
Member Alvarez.
Present.
Member Benenda.
Yeah.
Present.
Member Biancaria.
Here.
Member Guardiola.
Here.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Here.
Member Mailman.
Here.
Member McCullough.
Here.
Member Roy.
Here.
Mayor Petty.
Here. We have Student Advisory Committee items to review and improve the rules and regulations regarding transportation through buses and accessibility for all students regardless of their distance from the school, also to consider changes to amounts of students allowed on buses in order to provide a safe and comforting everyday experience for our students. So there's nobody here tonight, right? It's one of those holders for the next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, is that right? What's that? What do you want to do, Jermaine?
You want to hold it?
Jermaine, do you have another idea or?
Just through the chair, I think this item on what they had, we've kind of already taken it up and it went to subcommittee. Mr. Allen spoke about that. And I was hoping that someone would be here so he could just come up and kind of give.
We'll wait for the students then.
All right.
Okay. So roll call to hold it.
Member Alvarez. Yes. Member Benenda.
Yes.
Member Biancaria.
Yes.
Member Guardiola.
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Yes.
Member Mailman.
Yes.
Member Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
Yes. We have the consent agenda. Everybody else set? We can take that on the roll call. Roll call.
Member Alvarez.
Yes.
Member Benenda.
Yes.
Member Biancaria.
Yes.
Member Guardiola.
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Yes.
Member Mailman.
Yes.
Member McCullough.
Yes.
Member Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
Yes. We have our recognitions. To recognize, we'll do recognitions next, right, Brian? What's that? Oh, we'll do the Vikings first? Okay. To recognize the Worcester Vikings Youth Football Team for the success as a Central Mass Super Bowl Champions, Massachusetts State Champions, and New England Regional Finalist. Member Johnson?
Yes, thank you. To the chair, would like to welcome you, 11 U Worcester Vikings.
Oh.
Come on down.
Whoa, look at this team, yay!
Move in, nice and tight. Come on, keep coming down.
And keep going in front, keep going way down in front, yeah. There you go, awesome.
Squeeze on, everybody can squeeze on. Bring the coaches in and...
So, thank you to the chair. So I put this on, you know, typically, we recognize our high school students for their excellence in athletics and the things that they're doing in the community. You know, these are young scholars here in Worcester Public Schools that represent our schools well and would be moving on to junior high and high school in the future representing our schools. And what I could say is they're a great group of kids, they're hard-working young men, and the sacrifices that they put in in the summer and the hard work that they put in should be appreciated. They did. You know, I think over the past two years, they have been, what, 23 and 2? 23 and 1? Over the last two years, we were the Central Mass Super Bowl Champions this year, state final champions, and we made it to the New England Regional Finals, which we were one game away from qualifying to go to Florida. And I think these guys should be applauded and amended for that, for their work. And I do, real quick, I just want to recognize the coaches that put in a lot of work. We have Coach Nick over there, we have Coach Randy, Coach Jake, Coach Santana, and the head man right here, Coach Jackson. And just so you guys all know, this all wouldn't happen and we wouldn't do what we do here and these kids wouldn't be as well-prepared as they are. And we wouldn't be as well-prepared as we are if it wasn't for the team mom, Annie. Where's Annie at? Annie, there she is, right there. Thank you very much. And then just real quick, because I'm kind of new to doing this, I just want to give the mic to Coach Jackson who wants to say some kind words.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Johnson. And thank you all for having us. We really appreciate it. Like he said, the kids worked really, really hard over the past two years and overcame a lot of obstacles and a lot of adversity. I'm really proud of them. So I'm glad that they have this opportunity to be recognized by the city. And I hope they go out next year and work even harder to try and come back here again. So thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
So, we do have some certificates for everyone. And go ahead to the chair.
So I wanted to congratulate the team and the coaches for a job well done. You made Worcester proud. And so we're all going to receive a certificate of achievement that acknowledges the accomplishments of each of the football players as part of the Worcester Vikings Youth Football Team for the success as Central Mass Super Bowl Champions, Massachusetts State Champions, and New England Regional Finalists. So congratulations. And I'll read the names, so forgive me if I say them wrong. And the parents are out there, congratulations. You must have enjoyed the year this year. Did you have a good time? So the first one up would be Reginald Ajay. Reggie. I think Rachel or... Okay, next one up is Gerald Ajay Nyarko. Next one is Dahil Bethencourt. Next is Patrick Capasso. Next is Jordan Carceri. Next is Kenneth Donzal.
Wow, look at these trophies. Nice.
Okay, next is Isaac, is it DeShaw Allen? Jayden Dela Cruz. Kaden Delgado Brown. Javion Dudley. Giovanni Gray. Is it Kai Jackson? Key Jackson, Kai Jackson? Adrian Jimenez Barnalio. Marcus Johnson? I'm sorry. Did you get Marcus Johnson? No, okay. Luke Johnson. Michael, is it Corrie? Abuba, is it Kyaza? How'd you say it? AJ? Kevin Lee. Randy Marines. Over here. Okay, Randy, I gave Randy his. Calvin Marty. Jackson McGill. Jayden Mercado. Daniel Awuso. Michael Pachico. Januel Roman. Is it Savan Simon Sinensio? Seven. Kezen Santana Hestenberg. Nathaniel Smith Dela Cruz. Nathan Spokis. I got the last one. Joel Zong, is it Zong Bill Zuma?
Joel.
Want to get a picture? The school committee wants to come up on top with the picture if you want. If you want. Rachel, you want to go?
Closest to that seat all over here.
Get up on top.
You go up next to the mayor.
Right here.
What should we say?
Cheers.
Go Vikings.
All right, on three, we're going to say state champs.
Okay.
One, two, three.
State champs!
We all set?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations again.
Well done, boys.
Good job.
Our executive seal is here. Do we go back?
Who's here? Yeah, what's this? No, we can do that, yeah. We can do Brian. Let's just finish Brian and we'll go back.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Next up is congratulate Brian Allen, Sarah Consavo, Mohammed Sidiqui, apologies if I say your name wrong, Alana Thun, Nancy Boemstrom, Ashke Guro Roger Kuma, Liam Young, Stephanie Karosko, Kate Otta, and Emma Kearney for its recognition of the 23-24 Worcester Public Schools Budget with the Association of School Business Offices International for the 11th consecutive time. Mr. Allen, we have to get you a bigger office and put these in. So, Member Mailman?
So I won't be as 11 times deserves, like many, many words, but what I think does get lost sometimes is how outstanding that is and how fortunate we are to have your group led by you, Mr. Allen, but this amazing group that gets larger and wiser and further developed all the time. So, thank you, everybody. Congratulations. You guys rock. Mr. Allen, do you want to say something about your team? 11 years in.
Through the chair?
It's not on, I don't think. Is that on? Yep.
Through the chair?
You're on now.
Through the chair. Thank you to the school committee for the recognition and to Member Mailman for those comments, and certainly to Asbo International for the recognition. Just for context, Worcester's only of about 150 communities in the entire country that actually qualify for the criteria for this recognition. And so, I mean, that says a lot about our commitment to financial transparency and making the budget information available to the public. And thank you for your words about the team behind me filling the second row because they put the hard work into making, yes, a large budget book, but in a way that's very easy to read and digest once you actually get into it. When you spend $552 million, it does take a couple of pages to explain how that funding occurs. So a lot of work goes into that. And hopefully, it's appreciated by the school committee that we've actually adopted that criteria in our fiscal policy. So this is something that we continue to strive for each year. Again, it just makes our budget that much more transparent to the school committee and to the community. So thank you.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you through the chair. I want to commend the business team and let you know that not only are you being recognized nationally for the 11th time, but also when I attend meetings with other superintendents, they proudly tell me how they use the Worcester Public Schools Budget Book as their guide, and more and more are starting to say that. So you have an impact nationally, but you're also making a difference for local districts who see the budget book as a model. So thank you for really leading the way in that work.
Thank you. And as I was going to say, too, congratulations to the whole team. You do a great job on the budget. You really do. The whole team does. And Mr. Allen, maybe this is a coincidence, but you pretty much got this award for my years in office, so I'm going to take credit for it. No, thank you. I appreciate this and it makes a difference. So we each have a certificate for each of your team members, and it says Worcester Public Schools recognition of the 2023-24 Worcester Public Schools Budget with the Association of School Business Offices International for the 11th consecutive time. Explanation point. So first one up is Sarah Consavo. Is Sarah here? Yep. Mohammed Sidiqui? Mohammed? Mohammed, congratulations. You got the great work. Alana Thun? Not here? Nancy Boemstrom?
Congratulations, thank you.
Is it Ashke Guro?
Angela? Congratulations, thank you.
Liam Young?
Good job, congratulations.
Stephanie Karosko? Kate Otta? And Emma, she's, Emma's not here. Then we have Mr. Brian Allen. Congratulations. You guys want to look at a cool picture? Thank you. Oh, you want the other ones, Laura? You want to take these? Okay, we're going to go back to the Student Advisory Committee item to review and improve the rules and regulations regarding the transportation through buses and accessibility for all students regardless of their distance from the school, and also to consider changes to the amounts of students allowed on buses in order to provide a safe and comforting everyday experience for all students. So introduce yourself and what school you're from.
I'm Thomas Sutton from Veronco. My apologies for being late. Just got out of practice. But through the chair, I'd like to say to the school, I would like the school committee to consider some concerns around transportation. Worcester's worked really, really hard to make sure the buses are better. And Mr. Allen and his team are getting recognized tonight. But there is still some issues that concern students. I want to start with the overcrowding of buses. There are certain buses in the city that have a lot of students on to where the point, to the point where the kids have to sit on the floor. I think you all forget that when kids come to school, they bring stuff like their backpacks, their instruments, their baseball equipment. I know that the response is probably going to be that there's kids on the bus that shouldn't be on that bus, but well, that's understandable. They're just kids trying to get home and to school. We shouldn't be able to stop that and find any way to prohibit that. I also think, oh, the area of the city that the buses are servicing is an issue as well. Look at this and ask if it is equitable. Second point is elementary kids have access to the buses, but once you get to seventh grade, you're told you can, you have to walk about two miles to school. So if you don't have, if you live just inside that two-mile range, that's a walk to school. No matter what street or your neighborhood looks like, no matter how dark, there are kids who won't come to school sometimes because the walk is too long, too cold, too scary. And what is the equity in that? My last point is that the vision of the learner says that the students are supposed to be engaged community members. How can every student have the opportunity to engage if we don't offer buses that will get them to and from school each day? Wouldn't it be nice if we could have after-school buses at every school and every day so that kids can stay after in all the various programs our schools offer? Again, I have to say it, I want you to consider equity and access. I just want to thank all the bus drivers and bus monitors. Their job is wicked hard. I'm not sure most people could do it. I hope this new school committee will take the opportunity to examine what really happens with transportation and how we can continue to make it better, not just say it is great.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Well done. So send that to, you want to talk to Brian or James Allen?
Through the chair, we actually, we appreciate Mr. Sutton's comments. We had good conversation at Standing Committee of Finance just about a month ago on this exact topic. I think ideally, certainly, we could transport all of the students, Worcester Public Schools. That would make, I think, everybody's life a little easier. We currently transport 12,000 students and 12,000 students walk. Part of the conversation we had in finance and operation, and we agree that transportation should be removed, to remove barriers for students' access to education. And just this year, we're starting after-school buses at all of the secondary schools. So we completely agree with a lot of the comments that you made. Our challenge right now is really funding and availability of drivers. To add enough buses, even to bring it down to one-mile walk radius, would require 50 more buses to bring it down. So every student could take the bus would be another 50 buses. And so, the school committee has asked us numerous times over the years to look at changing the walk radius. And as we build our capacity in our own transportation department, that is something we seriously will be considering as we continue to add bus drivers. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sutton, and thank you to the effort of the whole committee. So we can file that. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Public comment. Does anybody want to speak from the public on any item? Seeing nobody, we'll move on from that. Public petition, we're going to hold Member Kamara's item. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Benenda?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, I have the report, the superintendent, from here to anywhere, together, multilingual program audit report and priorities. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you through the chair. As Dr. Morris and Ms. Mendez come up to the table to do their presentation, first want to welcome our new and returning school committee members. Look forward to working with you to continue to make positive impact, a positive impact on the lives of our nearly 25,000 scholars that we serve here in this great city of Worcester. Tonight, you're going to hear the outcomes and the recommendations that we have from the multilingual audit that we started last school year. And just to give context to the new committee members, when we came, when I came into the district and I completed my listening and learning tour, there was a lot of conversation around our multilingual youth and how we can offer improved programming for them. And so, like any good researcher and educator, you start with an assessment of what our current state is. And so, we brought in an outside group to, a third party, to take a look at our programs to let us know what the strengths were, but also where our opportunities for improvement are. And so, tonight's presentation will let you know, high level, what those strengths were, the opportunities for improvement. And I want to link this to the superintendent goal. It's actually the student goal that I have with the committee. And again, this is for the new committee members as much as those who are returning. So there are four goals that the committee will be evaluating me on at the end of this school year. I will be turning in evidence for them. Specifically for this presentation, the goal reads as following. By June 30, 2024, we will have collaboratively led school teams in identifying using multiple sources of evidence to... using multiple sources of evidence to assess, respond, and improve outcomes in all schools with an intentional focus on historically underserved youth. And we're going to do that by building capacity and valuing our, the knowledge that educators have, honoring authentic engagement and a sense of belonging, specifically as it pertains to our multilingual youth. The intention of this goal is to increase the number of students who are, are ready to be fluent, limited English proficiency students, or what I like to refer to as reclassified youth. So tonight, we're going to hear what the strengths are of our programs, where we have opportunities for improvement, and our next steps. And I want to thank the team. And again, welcome both our returning committee members and our new ones. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Morris.
Thank you. Through the chair, thank you for giving us this opportunity to present the multilingual program overview. Throughout the presentation, I hope you've noticed the beautiful artwork. And I want to call attention to the talented, amazing students that we have in our district that decorated and made each slide look a lot more beautiful. So we're going to hear a little bit more about what the multilingual program review entailed. So if we go to the next slide? Okay, there we go. Okay, so this slide, we're going to just briefly provide a presentation overview. So this evening, our outcomes are that we share findings and recommendations from the multilingual program overview with all of you. And in addition to that, we consider our next steps and our improvement as a district for our future work. You'll be hearing more about the multilingual program overview, what the audit process entailed, specific details about our data, more information about curriculum and our programs and some policy work, and ways that our professional learning and our family engagement efforts can be improved overall in our next steps. But I want to introduce to you the new director of multilingual education. To my right, this is Jessica Mendez. And she has been with us for, how long, Jess?
Three and a half months.
Three and a half months. So as Dr. Menares mentioned, we partnered with AIR. And if you're not familiar with AIR, it's American Institute for Research. They are a very well-known research organization with lots of experience and have done multiple multilingual audits across the country. So they, they, they were our group that led this multilingual audit. So before we get into the, the deepness of the presentation, I want to give you some information about the scope of the audit. So AIR had a series of researchers working with us, up to three to five, on different projects as part of the project. And they looked at data, lots of data, and lots of documents. And they analyzed and came up with ways in which how we could determine whether our, we were aligned with the priorities that we had determined were important for the Office of Multilingual Education to be focused on. And the purpose of the audit was not about compliance. It was certainly about how do we improve outcomes and provide the very best opportunity for our students that we can. So we wanted to provide actionable feedback on our progress. Where are, where are we now and where can we be? A review of data and a, look at data in a different way than we have been, and an analysis of our documents. We provided lots of documents, and we looked for coherence, alignment, and consistency. And also, we asked for some recommendations about ways we can improve and what we should be considering for our very next steps. So our next slide, I want to ground you in the English language learners in the Worcester Public Schools and what does that mean? So you, you're going to see a table at the top. And at the table, you'll see grade span. So we broke students down into K to five, six to eight, nine to 12. And then beside that, you're going to see that overall, we have about 7,000 multilingual students, give or take. We probably have more than even when this was, this table was developed. And level one to the right is when students first come in and they're learning English. It's the very beginning. And we have 25% of our multilingual learners are level one or EPL one students. You go further to the right, level two is things are starting to move a little bit. We, we label that category as emerging. And we have about 25% of our students as level, level two or EPL two. And then we go to three, four, five, and six. So level three, EPL three, you can see the majority of our students are sitting at EPL three. And we have 2,444 students at EPL level three. At EPL level four is when we start to see students who are able to meet and exceed expectations on MCAS, which is a different assessment than ACCESS. So it's important for us to be able to help our students move towards English language proficiency goals, but understand that learning takes time and it requires intentional design and strategy. So at the bottom table, you're going to see a breakdown of how many students we have at EPL one to six who tested. And you'll see that the majority of our ELL students are students in EPL two to four. Majority, not a surprise, of our students are EPLs, our L students are students in grades K to five. And that is really because as students move through the grades, they exit or hope to be exited from English language services. And we call that flipping. So when students flip, they are able to, it's usually around level four. So you'll see that level three, I want to bring your eyes back to that, K to, K to five, 31% of our students are EPL level three, six to eight, 40%, and then again, nine to 12, 40%. And we'll learn a little bit more about this. But EPL level three, we've had a hard time moving students from three to four. So I hope that gives you an overview of the context for our English language learners in the district. Our next slide, some of you have seen before, and we're calling it our current state, but it's actually how our students performed on MCAS, which is a specific, a different assessment than ACCESS. Access was, is a test that works, that develops, tests students' abilities or development towards English language proficiency. And MCAS, as you know, is very different. So at the top of the table, you're going to see, it's a busy slide. So you'll see ELA, math and science for grades three to eight at the top. You'll see the L students compared to the district in each category, ELA, math and science. And the bottom of the slide is grade 10, which is designed and set up in the same way. We added years, several years of data, 19 through 23. You will see school year 20 missing because that was the pandemic. But you will see in school year 19, we really still weren't where we needed to be. But 11% of our students were meeting and exceeding expectations. Then, as we know, in 2020, we shut down for a while, and we came back to a different context and scenario. But since then, we have really been unable to make the progress that we need to make regarding ELA progress for our L students. You'll see that we stayed pretty stuck at 5% of students meeting or exceeding expectations. Compared to the district, there is a wide gap. And then we move to the right, and you'll see math, and it's a similar story. We have made a little bit of gains. We've moved up from the year 2021 to 23, we've made 4% gain. However, in 19, we're at 10%. Came back from the pandemic, we, we had to work, we're working hard to recover. But we still aren't where we need to be in comparison to the district. If you look at school year 21 in math, you'll see 3%, and then you see 15% for the district. And that was the year that we returned following the pandemic. So there were obvious academic impact from the pandemic in our data in that one year. But we have henceforth not been able to accelerate and move the, the needle the way we'd like to. And then in science, it's a similar situation. So if we flip down to the bottom, you're going to see ELA, math and science for high school. And in 2019, 1% of our students were meeting or exceeding expectations on MCAS. And then, following that, we still have been unable to move the needle in the way we, we need to in comparison to the rest of the district. So this is a similar situation in math and, and again in science. So this is a slide around urgency. And it's also a slide around strategy and intentionality. So this is where we, we were. This was at the end of last year. We have put a lot of things in place to begin to address the many needs that we have. But this is where we come to for the audit, for some specific next steps, so that we can provide our learners the exactly rights environments for learning that we need to provide. So our next slide, I just want to talk to you a little bit more about what this data analysis entailed. It was really robust, and it was very involved. So we had, it began, believe it or not, in the end of the summer. And it went all through the fall. We had weekly phone calls with AIR, and we worked with the research team on a regular basis. And they did a very deep and thorough investigation and looked, and looked at everything from unique different perspectives and viewpoints. Their, their team was involved, they were very experienced in data analysis. One team member was an expert with multilingual education. And another member of the team was an expert in research design. So we had, I think, a top-notch team giving us great support in, in this analysis, so that we're able to provide, we hope, the best next steps for our, our students. So what the data they looked at was MCAS, obviously, in all sorts of ways. Access, deep investigation to subgroup performance, who's doing well, where are they doing well? Performance trends at grade levels. And then hundreds and hundreds of documents that were around, our own internal policies and procedures, curriculum, professional learning, different programmatic information, our enrollment procedures, and other guidance documents that we provide. So overall, I hope these previous slides gave you an understanding of what the audit did, what it intended, what we intended it to do, the context of our L learners, where we are with data. And now I'm going to hand the presentation over to Jessica, and she's going to walk you through some of the key findings. Again, this isn't every finding, these are high-level findings that were shared with us from our AIR team.
Through the chair, first, I would just like to say how grateful I am to be here and to be back home in Worcester and specifically in this role. So it's an aha moment to be here, knowing that I was watching it from the TV for so many years and even as a student. So I just wanted to say, I'm really, really grateful to be here today. In regards to the audit, when they went through all of the documents, they were able to categorize them into four categories. One of the, one of the categories was curriculum. So when they looked at the documents that pertain to our curriculum, these were the findings. So our structured English, our sheltered English immersion, our SEI, is an area to address and support content, content teachers with resources. So these are what some people would call our gen ed classes that still have to provide support to students who are multilingual learners. There's an area of need there that was found through, through the audit. We need to increase high-quality English language development curriculum and instructional practices across all grade levels. While there was some evidence of curriculum, it wasn't robust enough, and there were parts of the curriculum that were still, that needed a lot of development. So that came through in the audit. Integrate language standards into content learning and pedagogy in all SEI classrooms. So really embedding our language objectives and scaffolds in math, in science, in social studies, and all other content areas that also came through in the audit, specifically for curriculum. Next, the next category was professional learning findings. So there were some strengths. There were many modalities, lots of professional development that had taken place. Some supporting standard-based integration of content, culturally responsive approaches, and linguistic training were offered. What one of the find, a few of the findings for areas of growth were that there was a lot of PD, but they couldn't determine what the goal was and how they were connected. So there was a lot going on, but not really grounded. Couldn't figure out what, what the grounding was or, or the data behind it. Many PD offerings, but no evidence of focus. And an area for us to improve our coaching model and really refine what that looks like. When a coach is going into coach, and an ESL coach is going into coach in these areas, what does that look like? What is our actual coaching model? The next area was family and community findings. So strengths were the intentional efforts to deliver dual-language information to families. We did that well through Cafe B. There's also evidence of regular engagement with families through our LPAC meetings. And then areas of growth were cultural, culturally responsive communication, just improving that a little bit better, and then provide clear and consistent information and communication. Finally, program and policy findings was the last bucket. Areas of strength were, as a team, we began to develop ideas for ML handbook. The vision and missions were established. Some internal goals were developed to measure progress. Areas for growth were inconsistent information regarding enrollment practices, program descriptions, and services provided. Evaluate current programming, including SLIF and our new citizen center. And then SEI instruction must be prioritized, which also came up in one of the prior slides. So it was consistent. Now, this slide is learning and recommendations data. So what they, what they were able to do also was not just look at our documents, they were able to take a deep dive into our district data. And these were some of the findings. While you saw some of the, one of the charts, this is, narrows down our strengths and areas of growth just from the raw data. So what they realized were strengths is that listening is currently our highest domain when students are scoring in access. Level three students, which you saw, was that really big bucket. That was 2,400 students. Third and fourth grade students are making the most progress at level three. So that, those elementary years are really important. Elementary students are more likely to be reclassified versus students who are already in secondary. Reclassified MLs continue to do well. Reclassified means that they've met criteria, no longer are considered a multilingual learner. They no longer have to take the access test. Access level four students begin to demonstrate ELA proficiency. Areas of growth found through the data was that we have a high rate of duly identified students. Duly identified meaning that our students who are multilingual learners are being identified at a higher rate for have, for also qualifying for sped services above all, any other subcategory. Total average language proficiency scores kind of are flat. It, there's a really hard time getting out of that level three that we talked about earlier. Same thing for the next, for the next bullet point. The one after that emphasized speaking and literacy development for level three. More support for duly identified students at levels specifically two and four. And then must prioritize improvement for long-term Ls. So these are students that aren't testing out of access and are, are qualify as multilingual learners for many, many years. We call those long-term Ls. The next line is learning and recommendations. These were the four buckets that we talked about earlier. And then all the recommendations were for programs and policies to reorganize and clarify current program documents and check for accuracy. It was also recommended to create and develop a multilingual handbook that describes program processes and procedures for staff and outward facing for families, so they can understand the programs that their students are in. Improving our SLIF programming and their curriculum. In, for curriculum, it's to review current curricular resources, materials, and guidance, and provide more direction to educators. Establish high-quality evidence-based ELA common practices. And then adopting, or really informing and providing professional development on high, high-quality resources. Family and community, improve opportunities for family and community to get accurate information, improve and expand family forums. While the ones that we have, we host them once a quarter, just figuring out ways to get families more involved, more of that two-way communication and what they do informs our practice. For professional learning, develop strategic professional learning plan related to overarching priorities. Develop systems for frequent collaboration and provide system coherence.
You need this. So the next slide, you, you may remember seeing this in a previous presentation, but this is the roadmap ahead. So we put this together. So we put this together last year when we announced that we'd have a program audit. So this is the path that we recommend moving forward toward. So we have the results of our program audit. We're currently engaging a work group to review the program audit materials. And there was a lot in there, so we want to make sure we prioritize the just right recommendations for our district right now. And then in order to achieve all of these recommendations, we definitely need to implement a plan, a well-thought-out strategic plan that has the consensus of the working group. So it wouldn't be just the district deciding what we do. It would be the district with educators, teachers, so that we're able to create an actionable implementation plan. And then that plan will be our roadmap for how we continuously improve. So you've seen this before, I just wanted to remind you of that. So the next slide we selected because, obviously, this talented student that painted this or created this brings so many strengths, talents, assets to the classroom that we'd never want to forget that each one of our multilingual students brings all of this and more every day to the classroom. So our path forward is to remember that and to create a program that reaches all students and gives each student what they need at the time that they need it. So our path forward is, again, to reiterate, we're convening stakeholders currently. The winter of right now, 2024, in case you didn't know it was winter by the temperature outside. Curriculum, we are going to research, look at what we currently have available, but also what else is out there? Because we want to provide top-notch curricular resources, so teachers have what they need to do this most important work. This is challenging work ahead and we want to make sure our educators are well-prepared. You've heard about WEDA, World Class Instructional Design Standards, is what WEDA is. So we want to be able to provide guidance about what WEDA is and assist our educators with using the WEDA standards. Professional learning, we want to create a very specific English language development framework and professional learning plan for our district. And the task force and the team would be putting that forth. And so we could bring that intentionality and coherence to the plan. Family and community, we recognize that we can't do it alone and we need our families and we need the community. And we need to provide more opportunities for input and ensure that students' needs are well-represented from their parents, from their families, from their guardians, from their caretakers, so that we're able to build and design the just right program. And also policies and programs, we've been working really hard in the district to make sure that everything we do is correct, accurate, consistent, and documented. So you've heard a lot about different handbooks, guidebooks. We're in the process of now adding to and developing a multilingual handbook that will provide important resources and information for the district and for families. So we're able to create the ideal situation and environment for learning for our multilingual learners. So that's all we have and thank you and we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? So, Madam Superintendent?
I'm sorry, I was supposed to pass it to Dr. Manares.
That's okay. Through the chair. So what I want the committee to, what I want to point out is the importance of the intentionality of what we do for our multilingual youth and how we need to take everything that we do. And we need to embed it into the strategic plan, it can't sit separately. So it's really important that we have to be intentional about what we do, that's embedded into our strategic plan, that our actions and approaches are in line with what we know about language acquisition. When you see data that shows single-digit outcomes for multilingual youth, you should be outraged. You should not be okay with it. We can do so much better, our children can do so much better, and we have to be intentional about what we do. I don't talk a lot about my experience, but I will tell you that I spent 28 years working with language learners. They can do it. They can do so much more than what they're doing right now. And it's not because they don't have the intellect. So we have to be extremely intentional with our practices. And when we do that, our children will thrive. And they will thrive not only in the English language, but they will thrive in the language that they speak in their home. And that's what we want for them, right? So if you walk away with nothing else from this presentation about what this third party told us, it told us that we had a lot of great activities, but it lacked that intentionality. That's what I heard from this report over and over again. And so we've got to get really good about that. With that, I turn it back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Manares. Member Bean Carey, followed by Member Menendez.
Thank you. Congratulations on your position and it's good to be back. So terrific report. The thing that concerns me on this is we, as a school administration and we as school committee members, continue to judge everything off of how we're doing with the MCAS testing. So hopefully, over the next 12 to 24 months, there'll be some changes with MCAS and how they look at it and what's on there, how they test our kids. So I'm just wondering, the weaving of the action of the data and so on sounds terrific. But how are we weaving in any of the changes that are going to occur through any of the MCAS progress? Or do we have a contact? Are we on a committee? What actions are we taking to ensure that we are up to date and on the right action path?
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, thank you for that question. So I want to make sure that I'm answering your question correctly. So can you further elaborate, are you talking about advocacy at the state level?
Either area, I'm not quite sure how you would approach it as an administration and if they are even including any of the districts in, as far as that goes.
So we work very closely with our teacher union, with EAW, and they are advocating for the changes of MCAS and we are in support of that. And so as they move forward with it, we support them and we give them information. But it is running through MTA as it relates to changes for MCAS most specifically. And then we work with our community partners. When we're looking specifically at our multilingual youth, although there is the MCAS data we showed you, the piece that we really are focusing on is the access, which is the language progress, the proficiency in English. Because that's where we want our children to be growing and progressing. And when they do better in that, then they will be successful in life. So that's our primary focus when it comes to our multilingual youth.
Thank you. The reason I look at this is the trends, at least I'm hoping that the trend is more of an understanding of the test and the level of what it determines for the progress of a student perhaps can also change. So I feel as though we've been able to, through this, weave some of the actions that are absolutely necessary. And for years, when I worked for Worcester Public Schools, that was part of what I did during summertime, was develop programs that would help kids with math and English and science. So I'm a firm believer in that. I just hope that currently we can tie it all together, so we continue moving in the right direction. But our action steps are filled in with what changes will occur and keeping up to date with them. So it seems like the response through the chair to Superintendent is that EAW is informing us at this time? Or am I misunderstanding?
Through the chair, I wasn't quite sure what your question was. So if it's about advocacy and changing of the MCAS, that is something that EAW is working. If you're talking about the educational programming, no, then that's our work. And so we are focusing on language acquisition, most specifically. Ms. Mendez is working with the principals. We've identified over a few hundred children, right, that are ready to FLEP? And so we have targeted support for them during the day and after school, so that they are not becoming those long-term English learners that we know that keeps them out of other opportunities as they move on to secondary. So we've been very intentional about identifying the children that are ready to FLEP, giving them what they need. And then the intention is to move them out and keep supporting them and growing them, but we don't want them stuck in a program they don't need to be in anymore.
Understood. Thank you. And again, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you for this report. I have here with me the Worcester Tiered Focus Monitoring Report. It was done on March 14th to the 18th in 2022. We receive the final report on May 31st, 2022. It involved from DESI coming into the Worcester Public Schools and doing assessment of our Ls. It required hundreds of documents being reviewed and lots of interviews, including principals. It include the following areas: annual English language proficiency assessment, the state accountability assessment, the initial identification of Ls and Fls, the L program and services, program exit and readiness, parent involvement, declining entry to a program, parental notification, follow-up support for Ls, licensure requirements, professional development requirements, and records of Ls in 13 units. It was a very extensive review of our L program. Again, that was only in '22. Out of all of the 13 elements, the L program received only three that were not being implemented. And what does implemented mean by the state? The requirement is substantially met in all important aspects. The three areas that we did not meet it was the L, program and services, the licensure, and the records of Ls. That was partially implemented, which means the requirement in one or several important aspects is not entirely met. So now, in reading this report, it brings up several questions for me. The first one is, the company is not really cited on any citations with some of the results that were there. On the actual report, I expected it to be a little more extensive coming from IR. I've worked with them before and have really liked their work. My question was, what was the method of the audit? Was it just a collection of documents? Does not seem to include information about interviews. What was the criteria of measurement for the report? And then I was very concerned that, you know, dual-language is very important to us in the Worcester Public Schools, as well as the TB programs. Nothing in the recommendation of the report addresses those. So my question is, could we get a copy of the full report, so we could read it? What work will be done for the intersection of this very important report? That was done by DESI. And the last question is, looking at the report, I think the most important part of this is how are we going to move instruction? And what will impact our direct instruction? Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, through the chair. Thank you for that overview of the compliance report that came out of DESI. So when we talk about instructional programming, there's really two parts to it, right? There's compliance and then there's the commitment and the instructional pedagogy. The work that we had AIR do for us was around the instructional pedagogy. We know that the state comes in and does a compliance. That's, with all due respect, not really going to move the academic achievement of our children. That's just going to make sure that we're doing what the state says that we must do. And, you know, Worcester's been under the Department of Justice, actually, since, I think, 2008 for our multilingual youth. We're just about to finally exit that. And again, that is very low-level compliance. And so we're happy that we're going to be exiting that. We appreciate DESI coming in and taking a look at our compliance and we're happy that we meet most of that. This is about the educational outcome for our multilingual youth. And our community is asking and has been asking for many years for us to make a difference for our children and that's what we're working on. We're happy to provide the report for you and for any of the school committee members. It's pretty lengthy. What AIR did share with us is that there was a multitude of documents for them to review. It took them a really long time to really sift through. And that's part of why they said, there's a lot of activity, but we really need to get more intentional about how and what we do. So again, we're happy to share that with you. And I just want to make a distinction because it's, there's two different parts in when we have programming. We have compliance and we have educational outcomes and achievement. And this particular one, we were very focused on our educational outcome because we're trying to figure out why aren't our children achieving when we know that they can and we know that our educators are working really hard. So we'll get that report to you, we'll put that in a what's happening for you to review in the next two weeks.
Thank you. Member McCullough, followed by Member Mailman.
Thank you and thank you for the presentation. I really do appreciate that you included the artwork of our students. I thought that was wonderful and I really appreciated the symbolism at the end with the path forward. So first of all, I want to say to administration, thank you for being so vulnerable to have this audit done, to really take a step back and look at what we are doing currently. You know, we've certainly made a lot of progress over the years and knowing that we were not meeting the basic needs per DESI and certainly got to that part over the last, you know, several years. And now we're moving forward and looking at the access testing really more specifically. And something I've had conversations with, with some of the people that actually do our access testing and then some of our teachers in the building, set our English language learner teachers, have just talked about how so much more does need to be done and that it's not so much that the intent isn't there, but actually the application, as the superintendent was just referencing. So I'm really happy to see that, you know, we looked at, all right, here's what is working, here's where we need to improve, and here's how we can get better together to make these results even more successful for our L students and get them to FLEP. As we now know, I now I know what flipping is. So getting them there. And I think that's so crucial because I think to the point that we talk about the success of all of our students, right? You know, they can all succeed and it's how do we get them the additional supports to get there? And knowing that parents are at a point where they want their students to be kind of moved out of the access testing and not having to go through that, I've had conversations with parents about that as well. So I really do appreciate this. I always appreciate when we talk about the intentional and focused professional development for our educators because I think that's so important. We know that that is always, you know, a hot topic in every district, wherever you are. They want their professional development to be meaningful and something that's going to be applicable with their actual students in their day-to-day work. So I appreciate that we've talked about work groups and tying in the educators, as well as family and community engagement. I know that LPAC work has been great for the last few years and it's continued to get even better. I like the idea of both the educator-facing handbook and the family-facing handbook. I think that's so important. And I know, you know, our communications department, IT, are looking at the website and improving that. So I'll just ask through the chair, I'm assuming that that will also be in an electronic format for families to access as well when that is the time, through the chair? Yes, okay. All right. So that was one thing that I had about that. I mean, I look forward to continuing to see where the data goes with this as we implement some of the new programs and what we decide we're going to do for modalities and really the high-quality instruction. You know, we've worked on that for our overall ELA curriculum and how we can tie that in when we're looking how it's for the success of all of our students. So I'm looking forward to getting some more information as you continue to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Member Mailman?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I have a few questions. The high school, we don't move, we don't FLEP high school students or middle school or high school or both? And I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, who was, who would like to respond?
Through the chair, at any grade level, you can reclass and exit criteria, but it's harder at the high school level. What we're finding is that there's more likelihood for students at the elementary level to reclass. Once it gets to high school, that's where we're finding challenges and have a couple, have some barriers with it.
And so is that different here than it is in other places? Through the chair.
Ms. Mendez?
In other places, as in other districts?
In other districts, in other states, in other... The one thing that I think was kind of missing from this is context statewide and nationally from our report here.
Correct. It depends also, it depends when a student comes into the country, when a student comes to the state. That all plays in. And if you're entering, if you're a newcomer and you're coming in at ninth grade, there is a chance that you're not going to reclass in your high school year, so that also plays a fact.
In addition, through the chair, what happens as students get older and they move to the middle school and high school, the master schedule, their courses start to get changed, right? And access to grade-level content might get, you might have less access to that, less opportunity to be in classrooms with peers who might be more proficient in English because you're in your ELD. because you're in your ELD class or you're in your ESL class. So there's this variety of unintentional consequences that happen for children who may have, you know, if they started in our schools in elementary school. There should, we, we really need to make that effort and make sure that they reclassify before so that they don't have those barriers and they don't become those long-term English learners. And, and this is not just a Worcester challenge. This is nationally. It happens over and over again. And so, thus, the intentionality and really focusing on what children need in terms of their language development is so incredibly important. To what Ms. Mendez said, and then I'll turn it back to you. It absolutely, the time that a child comes into the United States does make a difference as well. As, as well as, did they have schooling in their first language in their country of origin? Because I've seen children, and that is what bilingual education is about. If you come in and you are literate in your primary language, you will transition much faster and become literate in that second and even third language. So there's a variety of aspects, but there's something else Ms. Mendez would like to add.
I did, I wanted to say that it's also more common for a high schooler to opt out of ESL services. So they're not getting that shell, that, that.
Right.
So, because it's interfering with them being in a class with a friend or something else. So our opt-out numbers are higher at the high school level, but they still have to take the access tests.
Okay. Thank you. And I, and I think what I agree with, I think, Member McCullough said that families, and we are not content with where we've been. To do this audit, we said, this is an area of concern for us. We're not seeing the progress that we would hope to see, and we can't have that anymore. So to your path forward, it sounds like this first number of months has really been the information gathering, which has, can be gathered. And when we do an audit, it's to confirm the data that others are telling us. So it's clear that that should be done. But when we go forward with the rest of these, can you give us like a timeline for what we expect? So engagement with the current staff, engagement with students, I would imagine is all part of these next steps. Is that correct?
And we just received the results of this audit right before December break. So we're still just diving into it and analyzing it. But once we get a deeper dive into the data and everything that they sent us, I would be able to send timelines. I just don't have one right now.
Okay, so would we, would we hope to have at least that high-level path forward by springtime? Is that the goal?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
And, and just to add a little bit more meat to it. So not only will we have a path forward, but it'll include what's going to make up this work group? Who's going to be a part of that? How, what's the frequency of the meetings? Like, that structure will be in place. And, and that'll be in place before spring. I mean, it's going to be like late, late winter that we're going to be able to move forward with this. And any parent who might be listening and/or advocate who's very passionate about multilingual youth, because there's quite a few out there, we want you to be a part of this, helping us to not only move forward, but keep looking back because I have lots of people who come to me and they tell me, what was the history in Worcester back when bilingual ed started here? How can we use, you know, build off of that? And so we want those voices at the table as well, and our youth.
Thank you. It's clear to me, we, we haven't got it done. I'm hoping we're going to get it done, and as are you. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Ms. Mendez, welcome, and look forward to working with you.
Through the chair, I'm always late. And I was actually zoning out for a second, to be honest with you. No, thank you for the, for the report. When the superintendent had mentioned that we, we should probably be, I don't know, our wheels should be grinding over seeing the data on this. I was, I was, I was actually confused, to be honest with you. Didn't think that we were going, I was going to look at that. And then, Member Mailman actually asked a couple of questions. I wanted to know about the high school students as well. And the reason why I was really interested in that, because, you know, being a social worker and seeing a lot of people come here, and we get a lot of older youth that come, and they get, go into our high schools or whatever. It just seems like it just didn't work for some reason. So I was interested in that. I'm just wondering, and I don't know if someone said this, because honestly, I was zoning out for a second here. But did anyone talk about, or, or do you have any idea or feedback on why, why are we so stagnant at the Level Three area? Like, why, why is that? Like, or is that something that we, we need to get?
I, I think that's the magic question, right? We're trying to dig into the why. But it, it came out of the data, it came out in the audit. We can see it in the data. When we look at our high school classes and the makeup of the classes, we see it in those classes. But really trying to figure out the why. Is it the curriculum that it needs to be more robust? We don't know yet, and that's where we're trying to do a deeper dive in. That is that magic question.
And that's a good, that's a good answer. I figured that. But I'm just wondering, in your professional opinion and your background in education and being around this for a long time and probably seeing this throughout the years or whatever, what, what, what are you thinking?
Ma'am Superintendent?
Through the chair. You know, you're just speaking to my, my heart here, right? Because this is, this is my love. This is very common. We see children who get to this, this Level Three, developing is what it's referred to here. And, and so when you're having a conversation with them, you would never know that they're English learners, that they're identified that way. People will be like, oh, now you speak English, great. You, you know, because they've got the social language of English. But it's the academic language that they need to continue to progress in. And if we're not intentional, again, about knowing where they're at and knowing how to build that academic language for the child with them and the academic vocabulary, then they stagnate. And, and it's, it's because we have to be very clear and understand language acquisition, which is different than academic achievement. And so, developing, and, and in Massachusetts, the way that we, we educate our educators for working with English learners, we, I think we need, we have some work to be done in that area because the language acquisition work in Massachusetts is done through our ESL teachers. And that is not throughout the whole school day. That's just, they're specialized, right? Whether they're a push-in or they're a pull-out, they're still specialized. They still spend the majority of their time with their fifth-grade teacher or their, their English language arts teacher, who doesn't get the same level of expertise and training as the ESL teacher does. And, and that came out in the audit, that we need to focus in on those, what are called the SEI settings. So it is about the language acquisition and supporting our educators on how do you do that? And, and not almost being fooled, if you will, that I'm having a conversation with you in English, you've got to be fine, when academically, that's not the case. And I could, and then I'll stop talking about it, but it's a passion. It's the same thing for me in Spanish. So any person who has a conversation with me in Spanish, I sound sometimes like I, I can understand things and I'm good, but I'm still translating in my head, and that, that takes more time. And so that's what the child is doing as well. They're looking for, like, what does that word mean in this, in my home language? I don't know what that word is in my home language, right? And that slows down the thinking process. So the, the delivery of instruction has to match the fact that they're still, they're like in this in-between time of language acquisition.
Thank you. And just my last point is, and I know we've, we've always, we, we talked about this as well. And when you talk about they usually do enroll, right? So receiving special ed services. And we kind of talked about our special ed services and kind of the transformation we're making in that. I'm hoping with this audit and kind of with the stuff, the things that we're doing with special ed, that we're actually going to tie that in because that's always, that's also been a concern.
Through the chair, absolutely.
Thank you. So again, welcome and thank you. Nice job, and look forward to you coming back. So with that, we can file that silent moles in favor, opposed or one. Okay. The Protestant Committee has considered you approve the man from the Governance and Employee Issues Meeting on the held on December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Member McCullough?
Thank you. So the Standing Committee on Governance and Employee Issues met on December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Present were Member Clancy, myself, and Member Johnson, along with Deputy Superintendent Allen, Annie Az-Larosa, Dr. Morse, and Director of Nursing and Health Services, Dr. Anne Marie Reynolds Lynch. The meeting, oh wait, oh yes, the meeting was called to order at four oh one by, that would have been Chairperson Clancy, so if we could just make an edit to those minutes, please. GB zero two eight eight point two from the administration. Response of the administration to request the outline in writing under what circumstances the Department of Children and Families is called regarding a family or child, particularly with regard to student attendance. Chief Academic Support Officer Az-Larosa explained that this is not a linear process and is implemented based on the needs of individual students and families. Member Johnson asked if this process is consistent across the district and if there is a specific number of days before intervention on the administrative, administrative level. Ms. Az-Larosa explained that there are efforts in place to focus on school-based interventions to help keep students in schools. Member Clancy asked at one point, is a letter sent or a phone call made to students' families in regards to days missed by students? Ms. Az-Larosa explained that after six days of missed school, families are notified. However, it has been inconsistent throughout the district. Member Clancy made a motion to file the item, and on a roll call of three to zero, the item was filed. The next item was three dash one five six point two from Member Clancy. Response of the administration to consider the renaming of St. Casimir's to the Dr. Michael O'Neill Program at the alternative school. Member Clancy made a motion to return this item to the full committee for a final vote. On a roll call of three to zero, the motion was approved. The next item, GB three dash two three seven point one, to consider dedicating the auditorium at the Durkin Administration Building in honor of Dr. Helen Freel, who dedicated her professional life to the Worcester Public Schools. Member Clancy made a motion to return this item to the full committee for a final vote, and on a roll call of three to zero, the motion was approved. Next item, GB three dash one five seven point two, to consider creating a policy regarding graduation ceremonies and student participation. Assistant Superintendent Marie Morse explained that students who are within two credits of achieving graduation requirements would be allowed to participate in graduation ceremonies with the understanding that they would not receive their full diploma until fulfilling those graduation requirements. And students missing more than two credits would be eligible to participate in a graduation ceremony when they had completed their requirements in August. Member Clancy made a motion to put the amendment with this policy in the student handbook, and on a roll call of three to zero, the item was filed as amended in the Standing Committee. Final item was GB three dash one zero eight point one. For the revised wellness policy, Member Clancy made a motion to hold this item in the Standing Committee on a roll call of three to zero. The motion was approved. And at that time, and roll call of three to zero, the motion to make, to adjourn the meeting was approved at four nineteen P M.
So motion to approve. Roll call.
Member Alvarez? Yes. Member Benanda?
Can I ask one question?
Okay, we'll have to go back and do the roll. We're in the middle of a roll call, but you can ask a question. We have to go back and do it again.
Okay.
No, go ahead.
I wanted to know if you want, if you didn't agree with all the items, how you would vote?
If we can, we can pull one item out.
I could pull that one out.
Yeah.
Can we pull the graduation one out?
Yeah. And so we'll, we'll take a roll call on, on the rest of the items. Roll call.
Member Alvarez? Yes. Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Member Benanda on the graduation item?
Having been a, you know, a high school principal and in the high school for thirty-eight years, I really feel as though high school students should not walk the stage unless they have received all their graduation requirements. And in reading this, I wonder how are you going to ensure that students actually do show up for those last two credits? It's always been in the Worcester Public Schools that you have to get twenty-four credits in order to walk the stage. And I'm just thinking, what are we doing? That now we're telling kids, well, you don't have to get twenty-four. You can walk the stage with twenty-two. I don't think we're setting up high standards for students. And I think we should continue with, you have to have met graduation requirements to walk the stage.
Thank you. Anybody else? Member Mailman?
I would imagine, not being a member of this committee, but I imagine that discussion happened at committee. And I'd actually like to hear from some of the members of the committee that had some of that discussion in response. Thanks. Through the chair.
Member McCullough?
Thank you. Through the chair. And I don't know if anyone from administration would want to comment on this as well, but there was conversation, and it was actually a conversation amongst principals, executive directors. I believe it may have been something that was discussed as the superintendent advisory with the students. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. But there was conversation amongst the principals and administration when making this decision that there were some really unique situations where somebody may have been two credits short. They knew that they had to fulfill those before the end of the summer in order to get their diploma, but that it was seeming to be somewhat punitive, that they weren't allowed to walk with their peers, and that those students who had more than two credits would not be allowed to. They would have to then participate in the summertime graduation that we started last year, I believe, that gave those students an opportunity to have some type of graduation ceremony if they had more than two credits to complete. But if they were two credits shy or less, they were allowed to walk graduation, but were not given their diploma until they completed their requirements.
Dr. Morse?
Through the chair, thank you for the opportunity to respond. Our group, our executive directors, myself polled the high school principals. And one of the things the high school principal shared was that high school graduation is a milestone in someone's life. And we wanted to do everything we could to ensure that students had the opportunity to celebrate that achievement with their family and with their classmates. So the high school principals agreed that the, with the variety of multitude of different ways that we have credit recovery currently, that the two-credit-short students should be able to participate in the graduation ceremony. However, they would not receive their diploma for graduating high school until those credits were recovered. So it was more about ensuring that we weren't penalizing students and taking something very important away from them, like high school graduation. And we were doing everything we could to ensure that they had that opportunity, but also hold them to a high standard where they had to meet those requirements. Walking the stage is different than graduating, getting credit for graduating from high school.
So let me clear, so two, two credits or less, you can walk the stage. Okay. Okay, anybody else? Member Benanda?
I find that interesting. We, we do so many things in the Worcester Public Schools to make up credits. We've always done it. And so now we say it's two credits, and you, you'll be able to walk the stage. Before, you know, what we'll be saying is four credits. I really think that there's a reason why we have a requirement for what you need to graduate from high school. And as soon as we start to change that requirement, we're not doing students favors. There's rules in life you have to follow in order to achieve things. And this is a very big rule. Walking the stage for graduation is a big thing. Yes, because you've earned it. You have achieved those twenty-four credits. You have taken the course as you're supposed to. You've attended school the number of days that you have supposed to attended. To start changing things, I think, is awful. It's not holding kids accountable to a very important thing, pre-K to grade twelve. There are expectations at what you have to do. So now you get to grade twelve, and now we're going to say, it's all right. You don't have to have those twenty-four credits. We've picked two as the number that you don't have to walk, that you can walk the stage and still not achieve. I don't think it's right. I don't think the general public thinks it's right. And I really think we need to not pass this, this particular item.
Okay, thank you. Good arguments on both sides, but I understand, this came from the principals, is my understanding. And, okay. Okay, so we'll take a roll, roll call on the recommendation of the committee on the, excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry. Member Mailman?
Maybe you were just going to answer my question. I was going to make a motion to move the item and vote the recommendation as that. Sorry, thank you.
So the motion is to vote either up or down the recommendation of the Governance Committee on two credits being able to walk the stage. Okay? I think I got that right, so roll call.
Member Alvarez? Yes. Member Benanda?
No.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Ah, yes. Okay. We are on approval of grants and the finance items. We'll take those collectively on a roll call. Anybody having questions on those prior to doing so? Roll call. Roll call.
Member Alvarez.
Yes.
Member Benanda.
Yes.
Member Biancaria.
Yes.
Member Guardiola.
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Yes.
Member Mailman.
Yes.
Member McCullough.
Yes.
Member Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
Yes. General business, consider renaming St. Casimir's to the St. Michael's, the Dr. Michael O'Neill's program of the alternative school. Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair. I would like to recommend that we actually file this and come back on, I believe it's March 7th. There's a report of the superintendent on all of the, on the alternative programs, and then once that happens, then we can have, then the committee could make a decision as to what would make most sense in terms of the naming. So, right now, I just think it's, we're kind of in this in-between time, so I would recommend that we file and we wait for, we file and then we come back with a conversation as a part of that, that report. I believe, again, it's the first committee meeting in March that we would have that conversation. We could also, if the committee so chooses, we could hold this until that time, so then you would have this report, and then it could make sense as to what would be the appropriate naming in terms of this recognition. Thank you.
Member McCullough?
Thank you. Through the chair. That's what I was actually going to ask. I believe that, you know, since we seem to be in consensus about an approval of naming something, I would like to hold it then if there is gonna be something with the alternative programs that we want to consider at that time, but I don't want to file it. I would like to make the motion to hold it so that we can then move forward when that discussion happens.
Okay, so we'll hold that to the March 7th meeting. Roll call.
Member Alvarez.
Yes.
Member Benanda.
No.
Member Biancaria.
Yes.
Member Guardiola.
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson.
I honestly have a question of.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, can we hold it that long? I thought when we held an item or held something on the floor, that it needed to be taken off at the next.
I think the rules say, I thought the rules said, I know we've changed the rules, but it said a date to be determined, so. It said you can hold it to the next week, a date to be determined. I thought that's what the rules said. I don't have them in front of me right now, but at one time it did. It doesn't, to tell you the truth, we don't really have a rule on that. We took it out, so, and it also is a regular hold, which the city council means it holds until it's taken off the table, and we don't have a privilege hold on.
Correct.
We don't have a privilege hold on the.
Can I speak for it?
Yeah.
As long as we're in compliance here, my vote would be yes, but.
Okay.
For the record.
That's it. Member Biancaria?
I agree with what Ms. McCullough has to say, and if we have to suspend those rules for this particular vote, then I certainly am open to that also, if that needs to be a step that we have to take, because at this particular time, this is very important. I don't want to see it filed and lost. I want to see it upheld, and I think it's a very serious item. He deserves some recognition. I don't want to lose that at all, and I feel as though if we need to suspend the rules, then that's what I would put forward.
There's no rule to suspend, so.
Okay, then it works.
So we can, we can put that in the item.
Thank you.
That'd be March 7th.
Thank you, Mayor. Sounds good.
So we'll start the roll call again.
Okay. Member Alvarez.
Yes.
Member Benanda.
Yes.
Member Biancaria.
Yes.
Member Guardiola.
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Yes.
Member Mailman.
Yes.
Member McCullough.
Yes.
Member Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
Yes. Okay. Next item is consider dedicating the auditorium to Durkin Administration Building in honor of Dr. Helen Freel, who dedicated her professional life to the Worcester Public Schools. Madam Superintendent?
So, the administration brought this forward sometime last school year, maybe it was the beginning of the school year in July. We would like to dedicate the auditorium of the Durkin Administration Building after Dr. Freel, and if the committee approves this, that's the recommendation, then we will get moving on that and have a nice celebration and to recognize Dr. Freel and all her years of service.
Perfect. So we'd like to organize that and get Dr. Freel and your contact, court will contact Dr. Freel, and we'll set a date up, so. And well deserved, and so thank you. And thank you to the school, prior school committee for asking to do this, and superintendent for coming forward. Thank you. Okay. So we can file this? Those in favor, opposed, or ordered? To consider that the open houses and similar opportunities are not scheduled on the same nights for the same pool of students.
As it reads.
Okay. So, maker is to refer to the administration. All those in favor, opposed, or ordered? A list, Member Benanda, a list of 2324 allocation requests for all principals by school and for all department heads for 2324 funding, please bold on the list all requests that were funded in the 2324 school year.
As it reads.
Okay. Okay. So, Member Johnson?
Yes. Through the chair, I was hoping to get some, I'm wondering, I could get some clarity on this item. Member Benanda, please.
Sure. Through the chair. The funding for this school year, as we know from the state, is already looking to be questionable in many areas. This is a question asking exactly what were unfunded allocation requests from principals from the prior 2324 school year, because assuming that those may be asked again in the 2425 school year. So I'm looking for a list of those things that principals and department heads did not receive.
That's it?
Yeah. Can I make a motion that we potentially send that to budget to discuss that during budget?
Okay. So send that to, the motion is to send to Finance and Operations and Governance? Okay. Remember, oh, I thought you said send to Budget. Oh, the Budget.
Budget.
Oh, Budget. Okay. Budget, I'm sorry. Member Mailman?
I guess through the chair. I'm wondering why, why we wouldn't file this item right now. This is not, you know, this is not, we don't not make, we don't, we don't look at the lists of what the principals ask for and don't get, but anybody that's been involved for a long time knows that every year there's lists, and every year principals get or do not get things that they need, so I guess I'm just confused as to why we're even taking this up. To move it to budget is really where it's gonna be anyways in the whole discussion, and as those of us that have taken the training know, our job as school committee is higher level and not line item level. So I would make a motion that we file this item. Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Okay. I'm just gonna add the rules, one second. So, okay, no, here's the rule right here on the hold. You can say it to a certain day, it's right in the rule. So we're all set, so on the hold. I found that. Okay. I know I read that somewhere. Okay. And so, the motion to refer to budget takes precedence over the motion to file, so. And I sort of agree with, like, I know on the city side, we get, the city manager gets probably millions of dollars from department heads and requests, so I'm trying to understand what the purpose, because I, of this is, because most principals, I would guess, would ask for the world and see what they can get, and then the, and department heads would too, and so I'm not sure how that plays into the budget, so. Anyway, so the motion is referred to budget, it takes precedence over the motion to file. Excuse me? If that fails, then we take the motion to file. If that fails, then we take the motion. Okay. First one is the motion is to send to budget. Roll call.
Member Alvarez.
Yes.
Member Benanda.
Yes.
Member Biancaria.
Yes.
Member Guardiola.
No.
Vice Chair Johnson.
No.
Member Mailman.
No.
Member McCullough.
No.
Member Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
Yes. That's the vote.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Six, no's?
Six yeses.
Six, so we'll go to the budget?
Yes, it's a budget.
Okay.
Motion passed.
Okay. Okay. The next item is, consider approve of the minutes, I'm sorry.
Mayor Petty? If I can just have a clarifying question. So, in reference to this last one, I'm sorry, what number was it? Four dash five. So, is the, is what the committee is asking for is now to have the line items of asks of principals and directors moving forward, because if we're gonna do it for 2324, which is the year we're in, and then we're going to move it forward to budget, I'm not even sure. Are we bringing two years now of that data forward to you? I just, that's important for the committee, because that's not the way we've done it in the past. They bring it to us, we consolidate, we look at, especially now, we have a strategic plan. We're going to look at that. I'll be bringing recommendations forward. So, is it just for just this one year, and then?
I thought we just have a discussion budget. Member McCullough? That's a good point. Well, we can reconsider the item if we want.
Through the chair, that list is already done. How the allocation works is that principals get a form on one side of it is what they had for the current year, and on the other side is what they're requesting for the new year. Mr. Allen keeps a copy of that list, so that is not a lot of work. That list already exists. So it's just a matter of bringing that forward to the committee and to be able to look and discuss that list from last year. Thank you.
My motion is reconsider the item. So, so the first motion to take is the motion to reconsider, if we can, then the second motion is to reconsider the item. So there's two motions, so there's two votes for the new people?
Yeah.
So, there's two votes to take. One is to reconsider the item. Then the next one, the first one is to give permission to, excuse me, to reconsider the item. The second one is to reconsider the item itself, so. Roll call.
Member Alvarez. Can you please clarify that?
Yeah, so under the school committee rules, which is different from the council rules, is that we require that people understand what they're voting on, is the school committee decides first is whether or not you're gonna allow the motion to reconsider. So if you say yes, then we go to the motion to reconsider itself.
Okay.
So, it's a little confusing. I used to be confused on.
Yes?
Yep. I'm glad, yes.
Yes? Okay. Member Benanda.
No.
Member Biancaria.
No.
Member Guardiola.
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Yes.
Member Mailman.
Yes.
Member McCullough.
Yes.
Member Roy.
No.
Mayor Petty.
Yes. That's the vote.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Six, no's?
Six yeses.
Six, so we'll go to the budget?
Yes, it's a budget.
Okay.
Motion passed.
Okay. Okay. The next item is, consider approve of the minutes, I'm sorry.
Mayor Petty? If I can just have a clarifying question. So, in reference to this last one, I'm sorry, what number was it? Four dash five. So, is the, is what the committee is asking for is now to have the line items of asks of principals and directors moving forward, because if we're gonna do it for 2324, which is the year we're in, and then we're going to move it forward to budget, I'm not even sure. Are we bringing two years now of that data forward to you? I just, that's important for the committee, because that's not the way we've done it in the past. They bring it to us, we consolidate, we look at, especially now, we have a strategic plan. We're going to look at that. I'll be bringing recommendations forward. So, is it just for just this one year, and then?
I thought we just have a discussion budget. Member McCullough? That's a good point. Well, we can reconsider the item if we want.
Through the chair, that list is already done. How the allocation works is that principals get a form on one side of it is what they had for the current year, and on the other side is what they're requesting for the new year. Mr. Allen keeps a copy of that list, so that is not a lot of work. That list already exists. So it's just a matter of bringing that forward to the committee and to be able to look and discuss that list from last year. Thank you.
My motion is reconsider the item. So, so the first motion to take is the motion to reconsider, if we can, then the second motion is to reconsider the item. So there's two motions, so there's two votes for the new people?
Yeah.
So, there's two votes to take. One is to reconsider the item. Then the next one, the first one is to give permission to, excuse me, to reconsider the item. The second one is to reconsider the item itself, so. Roll call.
Member Alvarez. Can you please clarify that?
Yeah, so under the school committee rules, which is different from the council rules, is that we require that people understand what they're voting on, is the school committee decides first is whether or not you're gonna allow the motion to reconsider. So if you say yes, then we go to the motion to reconsider itself.
Okay.
So, it's a little confusing. I used to be confused on.
Yes?
Yep.
Yes? Okay. Member Benanda.
No.
Member Biancaria.
No.
Member Roy.
No.
Mayor Petty.
Yes.
Six yeses.
Six yeses? So six to three?
Six to three.
Okay.
Six yeses.
Six yeses? So, six to three?
Six to three.
Okay. Okay, so the reason I asked to reconsider, I can see the confusion that this would create during the budget and trying to bring, I just don't think it makes sense to bring in all the asks, the requests for every single principal and every single department head. And, uh, and we don't allow it on the city side and the budget, and, uh, and I just, and I said it earlier too, I just don't understand what this would do. So, because the state budget is probably gonna be, it's been cut once, and those, and, uh, I just don't see edu, going to the speech last night, I just don't see education being cut in the future unless something, unless something happens, so. Okay, so the motion then would be to file. What? Okay.
So, the motion is to file, not to send to budget?
Correct.
Okay.
Right now, we only have one motion on the floor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
No.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Member, uh, Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
No.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay.
Excuse, excuse me, I was not asked for my vote.
Oh, we, mystery.
Member Biancaria?
No.
What's that? Okay.
Six to three.
Okay. A report of the rental costs of, for the building, including the original rental for the bus yard, and the increases in the dates of the increase include cost of additional build outs at the bu, bus yard for other departments and the cost of the gas station for the buses. Motion is refer to finance, but now, Member Benanda? Member Benanda, you want?
Uh, through the chair. This item is really important, uh, because, uh, we're looking at again, uh, what's gonna happen to the budget, really need to know what are, what is the rental cost for all buildings that, that we're paying for, uh, as being fiscally responsible, uh, we really do need to know that, uh, going forward for the budget. Everything I've read about, uh, the bus yard, the buses and the cost, uh, unless I missed it, I've never seen the cost out of, uh, the gas station, uh, for the buses. So, uh, so that's the explanation and, um, as written.
Okay, so the member, his motion is to refer to Finance and Operations Committee? Member Mailman?
Thank you. As we head into this, um, session, I, I feel a responsibility, I, I think, um, through the chair, other members feel a responsibility to bring information to the public, um, and that's part of why we file items. But those items that get filed have to be under a context. We have a elaborate budget process, we are really good at it, and it seems to me, when I was looking at this item, that these, you know, these contracts and these increases were likely signed under a, a former administration. So, I, it seems to me that this might be one of those items where we're, um, and I, I, I use this word, I wish I could think of another word, but I can't on my feet here. So, when I think of items that are filed for, uh, vendetta purposes versus non-vendetta purposes, I think, um, this to me screams out a little bit. We are going to go through thorough review, that is gonna come before the school committee, it's gonna come before finance, um, and those are questions that I believe in my only one year of being on, on one term on the school committee before, would get asked in a finance review for the budget. So, I, I just don't, it, it is redundant to send it to Finance and Operations, it's gonna be part of the budget process, and again, I'm, I would make a motion to file. Thank you.
So, we have a motion to refer, then we have a motion to file. Anything else? So, the first motion is to refer the, to Finance and Operations and Government Standing Committee? Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
If I understand you correctly, this is a vote to send it to Finance?
Correct.
And not to file?
Correct.
But I can vote on filing?
Yep, so the first vote would be to send it to Finance and Operations. If that fails, the second vote would be to file.
No, I want to file.
Okay, so you wanna, you wanna vote no on this item? Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
No.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Uh, yes. We'll send out the Finance and Operations.
Member Mailman?
Miss Mail, Mrs. Mail.
I would be a no.
Oh, we.
I would be a no.
So, it's six to three.
Okay. Okay, so our next item is, uh, report on the number of weak weapons, drugs confiscated, and number turned into the Worcester Police for the twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Uh, Member Benanda?
I think one of the biggest conversations I had with people, uh, when I was running for this position, was school safety. Uh, I think many people here actually, uh, also ran on that. And in the Police Reform Act, uh, it clearly states that all weapons, uh, need to be turned into the police, the local police. And so, in order to, that's another way of making sure that schools are safe, is that, uh, the police have control of the weapons, and they get turned into them. So, uh, I'm interested in exactly how many weapons and drugs have been confiscated, and, uh, also the number that's been turned into the police. In the past, those numbers have not matched, and so that's why, uh, both those numbers are, are there. Really interested in safe schools, and, uh, we all know that, uh, we can't have safe schools if we're not taking weapons and drugs from students and, uh, put them in a safe place, so as, as listed.
Just wanna speak quick, sorry, Member Johnson. You know, it'd be a nice report to get, but, um, just to be clear too, though, I just don't want anybody thinking that there's a massive amount of weapons in the Worcester Public Schools, because we work too hard, and I'm gonna say I work very hard, and I think every school committee member, present in the past, and, uh, really care about safety of schools. I've asked the superintendent to develop based a public safety committee, uh, made up of community members, law enforcement, and educators here in the, in the, in the schools. And, uh, because what, and what I want allowed to happen again, is to have this front page story on the Worcester Public Schools, saying that we, we're not a safe school, not a safe city. And I let it happen at North High School, which I regret, before your arrival, and, uh, people used politics for, for North High School, and it's a good school. And people should very be realized too, in the last two years, coming out of COVID, we had a tough year, I remember that year, I think it was prior to you, and the super, former superintendent told you it was a tough year that year, there's no question about it. But we made a lot of strides and a lot of investment, and you had the president of EAW, was at the last meeting, saying how good things are going. When does, when does that ever happen? And, uh, so, the sense from the schools, from the principals, from the people I talked to, and that the schools are, are run, it doesn't mean we don't have issues. We have challenges, no question. There's gonna be a fight, there could be a fight tomorrow, there's no question about that. And sometimes, what's that? No, okay, I'll take that one back, but, uh, but, and the kids, you know, when kids walk the streets, what they might have in their pockets is legal on the streets of the city of Worcester, but once they hit the Worcester Public Schools, it's not legal. And so, it'd be a nice, to have this report, but, uh, and what our policy is and how we enforce that policy, um, we put these dean of students in place, and, uh, my impression anyways, is that from talking to principals, talking to dean of students, and talking to, just teachers, and the, in the, uh, in the whole change of atmosphere in the schools, whether it be with the quadrant managers, uh, whether it be with the wraparound coordinators, and there's another category you have in the schools, so I forget the other group, but, what's that? Climate and culture. And, uh, it's making a difference. The schools are, is really on the right track, and we've invested in that. And, uh, we made that determination, we put money into the budget for it, uh, or we moved money around to, in order to ensure that these new positions were funded. And, uh, if you look at the climate change in, in the schools this year, is so positive. It's so positive. And, uh, but I just don't want that, people will left the impression that people are bringing, um, weapons into the schools, uh, of where, whether it be a gun, or a large knife, or something like that. So, it'd be nice to get the policy, nice to get the report, so we can be transparent with the, with the thing. But I just don't want people to think that the Worcester Public Schools are unsafe, because we've invested too much time and energy. Superintendent has done audit on the physical safety of the schools, meaning the buildings themselves, and we're gonna, the chief of police, I've had discussions with the manager, to look at the best practices for all our public buildings, including this building, including the city side buildings, and every single Worcester Public School building. So, this is an important issue from the city council perspective, and from the, uh, my perspective, and from the superintendent's and the city manager's perspective. And that's why I'm just getting down to talk about this, it has nothing to do with the R itself, I just wanna make sure people understand that we're on top of this, and, uh, the chief's on top of this, and we're gonna work together to make sure our students are safe, our educators are safe here in the city of Worcester. Thank you.
Counsel Guardiola, followed by, uh, I'm counsel, I'm sorry, school committee member Guardiola, followed by, uh, Member Mailman?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just wanna say, I do appreciate the request for this report, you know, obviously, safety in schools is something that I as well ran on. I do think that the administration, as well as the committee, prior committee, had really worked hard to make sure there is safety in school, uh, but I don't think there's anything wrong with transparency, and I think that the report will help us kinda navigate through the waters, uh, regardless of what the outcomes are on that report. I, obviously, I hope that it comes back favorable, that we are, you know, a safe, uh, district compared to anybody across the country, because I truly believe in that, but, uh, I, I appreciate the, the request for the report, as, uh, I too believe that, uh, transparency is crucial. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, I mean, Member Mailman?
Ooh. I would like context surrounding these kind of requests, and the context I'm thinking of is eight years' worth of data, not two years' worth of data. I'd also like to see, um, us compared to other like cities, perhaps Springfield and Boston. So, I don't want us look, I would prefer that we not look at information in a vacuum, and I think, um, if we say one, that's too much, right? But we'll likely see that, so what are we gonna do with that? So, and then a, a follow-up through the chair to the chair, or to the superintendent, I would assume this is work that will be looked at in the new, um, advisory committee, and so, would this be data that we would send to that advisory committee? Through the chair, to the superintendent?
Well, to a, to a, but probably the both, to, to, probably Finance and Operations if it's, and also to, uh, that committee, too. Um, Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, so, um, the recommendation would be to first send it to the, the advisory that you've asked me to start, and then from there, if there are recommendations that would be policy-driven, then we would send it to Finance, Operation, and Governance.
Yep.
Bringing it back to the committee first, of course, and then, um, recommending that it goes to FOG.
So, we'll get a report back first.
We would end up at school committee with a report back from the subcommittee, or the advisory committee, is that?
No, the, the report's gonna go to the administration, they're gonna come back with the report to the school committee.
So, the, so the, the process I'm, I'm thinking is, this report would, um, well, so right now, it's being, it's on the floor to be referred to administration, but I think, um, Member Mailman's question is, would this report be then sent to this new advisory, the superintendent advisory, for further context and review, and then the recommendations that would come out of that advisory then would come back to the school committee?
That is my question.
Yeah, we could do it that way. But I just wanna see the report, I want, I think the school committee wants to see the report in general. Yeah.
Then I would like to make a formal amendment, or, is that the right word? To this item, to have eight years' worth of data with like cities included as well. Thank you.
As far back as you can go, right, okay. Up to eight years, okay. Member Biancaria, followed by Member Johnson?
This is not a major discussion. I have historically received, as a twelve-year school committee member, prior reports that include this, and historically, we have the knowledge as a committee and as the mayor, we receive this on an annual basis. It's, it's not a major catastrophe to ask for this information, it's necessary to put forward how safe we are, how we all work together, how we're collaborative with what we want and what we look at, and that is safe schools. So, to blow this up into anything else is amazing to me, because in actuality, if you look back, you notes, twelve years of them on the school committee, I can tell you that in this particular year, this is what occurred. So, in, in, there, there isn't a question on what we're going to do with it, or eight years of it, or twelve years of it, or twenty years of it. It's simply looking at two school years to get some information and move forward. Um, I, I don't see anything else in this, and, um, I'm very happy to hear about a public safety committee, uh, whether you wanna call it committee, advisory committee, however you wanna use that title, but, um, I think that's great progress. I also think that, uh, chief of police has worked very well to coordinate, uh, safe schools in the city of Worcester, along with the mayor. So, um, this is a simple request, literally a simple request. In the past, it was a simple request, it should stay, please, just a simple request. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Johnson?
I would just like to also, uh, put, um, amend this, and when we're looking at this and we're getting a report, when, when you talk about weapons, that's broad, can we break this down in regards to different, there could be, I don't know, there could have been a, a box cutter found in school, or whatever, I mean, there's different forms of weapons, and there's different forms of drugs or whatever found in school, so if we could just get that broken down based on if there were any confiscated and passed over to, to, to the Worcester Police Department, just break it down on what type of weapon or, or anything that was, um, found, or drugs that were found. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so the item is to refer to the administration for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and the amendment is include comparisons with the city of Boston and Springfield, and maybe go back if possible up to eight years, so we have a history, and probably history would be sort of interesting to see, to see if we, where we are in the progress that we're doing currently, and also break out the, you know, see to break out the different types of weapons, I think that was the intent anyways, the different, um, different types and different types of drugs, so. Okay, so we send it as amended? Roll call, others in favor? Opposed, so court it. Okay. Okay. What's next here? Report of the table organization, names, souring, certification of all included, and, um, and Member Benanda?
Uh, through the chair. That, uh, table organization is so massive, that I'm finding, I'm not understanding, uh, also who you contact, uh, for different things, and, uh, people that work in the school system say the same thing to me, uh, when I was campaigning also, that they found it difficult to know, uh, who, whose responsibility it was for different things. I do understand that, um, I think it was the executive director that people are to go through, um, however, uh, people feel as though, um, they would like to know the table organization. The second reason is, and I'll go back to a previous item here about, uh, things that, uh, principals did not get, uh, that they asked for in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and probably still need in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and knowing that, uh, there is a possibility that cuts would have to come from the budget. I would say that if those cuts have to come, they have to come from that table of organization. No cut should be made on the ground floor, there are still a lot of services that, uh, students are not getting that they should be getting, there are still a lot of supplies and resources that teachers are not getting for their classrooms, and, uh, there is lots of things, one of the reasons that I asked for that table of, uh, allocation, was because there are a lot of things that have not been given to department heads and also to principals. So, it is very important to have this table organization. So, we as school committee members, being fiscally responsible for the budget is one of our main reasons for being here, so, if we get to that point, when we do get that budget from Mr. Allen, and, uh, the whole time I've known Mr. Allen, he's always said that the budget's tight, so I'm assuming he'll be saying that again to us here, of course, in a different role for myself now as a school committee member, that we really need to look at that table organization, understand the roles on it, understanding that everybody is supposed to be certified in their area and the salary, so that if we have to make recommendations for eliminating some of those positions, uh, we're doing it based on, uh, the salaries. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll get, Member Johnson? Member Johnson?
Yeah. To the chair, um, I'm actually a, a, a little lost for word, I, and I've only been on for one, I, I've never heard, and I watch meetings and other people have been, I, I believe, I've never heard of a item or asking for salaries of administrators and certifications of administrators. We, we have a organizational chart, which Member Benanda said is huge. So, we asking for every salary of every administrator that is currently employed, and their certifications on whether or not they're qualified to do this job, is, is that really what our role, we, we authorize the job, we, we receive job descriptions, we authorize those with a salary in there, with qualifications on doing that job. We then leave that to the superintendent to go and hire those individuals, and we trust that those individuals were hired based on their certification, their qualifications, and receive the compensation that is needed. We could look at these things come budget season, which we always do, which is within our purview to do so. I think this is a overreach, um, Mr. Chair, and I, I, I'm going to ask that this item also be filed today. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Member Mailman?
I just would totally agree with Member Johnson, and that this item be filed, I guess I could have just used my vote for that, so I'll be quiet.
Okay, Member Benanda?
I think it's important to realize that we do represent the people that voted us into office, and we must be fiscally responsible. Both those items that Mr. Johnson talked about is in the public domain to know. We are using taxpayers' money to pay for salaries, and they have the right to know the salary of every person that is working for the whole Worcester Public Schools. And as far as the certification goes, that has become such an issue, that now there's public lookup for certifications of people in their jobs, and the state makes it clear that you need to be certified, or you need to have an emergency license to be in your position. Thank you.
I believe, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I believe that, all those are, that's public record, and people could look that up, you could look that up tonight if you wanted to, that, that's public record, to find salaries of all the employees and, and their certifications. I, I don't understand why we're, we're making a mockery of this here on the floor, I mean, this is not, I, you've been around a long time, I don't think this has ever been, ever been done before, Mr. Mayor. Again, my, my motion still stands to file this away, I, I just, I, and we could take this up during budget season. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I guess, so we have a motion to file, it is true that this is something we never really asked, it's in the budget, it will be in the budget come on, in, in May and June, when the budget was presented to us by Mr. Allen, every salary, and it is a public record. Certifications, superintendent's working on certifications, we've always had an issue sometimes in the past, and they have emergency, and this would be like a huge, it's already been done, it's in the budget, and, and I just don't understand what this is gonna do, because it's not gonna be about, you don't cut the budget, if, if there's a budget cut from the state based on what someone's making, you base it based on how the superintendent's gonna recommend to operate the school system. And so, and that would, and we have, if we do come to that, that will be in Mr. Allen's budget when it comes in, in May and June, or even after that, or before that, depending what the state budget does. And it appears that the state budget's going straightforward to the end of this fiscal year without any more conditional cuts. Okay, we cross our fingers. Okay, so we have, the first motion is the motion to file, the second motion is the motion to refer, so. Did I get that right? Do we have a motion to file, I'm sorry? Oh, roll call, I'm sorry.
Member Alvarez?
Yes, motion to file.
Member Menanda?
No.
Member Biancaria?
No.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
No.
Mayor Petty?
Oh, yes.
Sixty-three motion passes.
Okay. So we're going to the next item, request the administration provide a report with the updates for improvement for the Roosevelt School transportation parking issues, including the timeframe for work to be completed in the spring of 2024, the motion to refer to finance and operations. Member Biancaria?
Five hundred and ninety-six students are enrolled in Roosevelt School, and I think there's about two hundred cars every day waiting on Grafton Street to pick up the kids. So I've spoken to the parents, I've talked to the businesses, I've walked up and down the street. Yes, we have this issue in other schools, but it is unbelievable in this particular area. You can't get Lake Ave, you can't get Grafton Street, you can't go to Sunderland Road. So at this particular time, I've seen car accidents, I've seen adults fighting over a parking space that they shouldn't even be in, because they parked in a business that they're not using, they're waiting for their child. So everything has been happening there, and with the weather, in, in the snow, it hasn't stopped anybody from, starting at twelve-thirty in the afternoon, the cars start to pile up, and there's, kids aren't getting out until two forty-five, two thirty, two forty-five, and they're there at twelve-thirty. So it just amazes me. But in any case, I look forward to what Mr. Allen has to bring forward tonight through the mayor, through the administration, so we could have a quick discussion on how we're progressing towards this issue, and what we plan on doing in, in some type of a timeframe. So I certainly would like to give administration the opportunity. Thank you.
Through the chair, I checked, she provided a couple of slides to show a visual, visual of the actual proposed design, so let me just start that. So just in context, just to orient, this is the final design for the traffic improvement at Roosevelt. Grafton Street is at the bottom of the slide, and Sunderland Road is at the top of the slide. So as of today, the design is in final construction documents, and the necessary, going through the necessary permitting process, including with the EPA and the Conservation Commission. And so I'll just walk you through how the design has come together over the last several months. First is the creation of a new entrance here right off of Sunderland Road. The intent of the design is to create a new school bus path to segregate the buses from the parent pickup line, and the buses would enter and exit solely through Sunderland The next part of the project is the creation of a new parking lot in the land that was purchased by the city. This will provide additional parking at the school, as well as to accommodate some of the parking spaces that we need to remove to create a parent drop-off and pickup loop, which you'll see on the next slide. So third is this creation of removing some parking spaces and create a parent drop-off, pickup loop. Overall, within the new lot above, and this change, we're actually adding a net increase of forty-four parking spaces to the school. Parent cars would still enter from Grafton Street, but would be kept separate from the school bus traffic. We'd be doing this through installing portable bollards and a speed table at the separation of these two areas. The parent cars would then loop back down through that parking lot and onto Grafton Street. We expect that the city is going to make that a right turn only onto Grafton Street. The final two improvements on the land is the resurfacing of the existing parking lot, as well as the creation of ADA compliant sidewalks on our property, startling, starting out where Sunderland Woods is, and going up the street just probably to Perkins Farm. We understand that DPW, separate from our work, will extend that sidewalk to the south, down to the Redwood Hills area. So subject to all of the regulatory approvals and permits, the construction target is to start around May first, with a new parking lot and new driveway while school is still in session, as this work can occur without impacting current school operations, and then to complete the work over the summer month for the start of next school year. Total estimated cost for this proposal is about one point six million dollars, and the city has, is providing us with one point two million dollars, and the remainder, we're using WPS capital funds. So this has been part of our quarterly presentations in finance and operations, and obviously we'll keep the school committee updated through that report.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And you've had discussions with, oh, go ahead.
Terrific, absolutely terrific to hear, and I do wanna say that I thank our city manager for working together with us counselors and our mayor.
Counsel Russell.
Yes, I'm getting to that. And our mayor, along with Counsel Russell, I know the sidewalks are being done, it's not gonna be a cost to the residents, from what I understand, that was an improvement to what the discussion originally started with, along with the fact that we're looking at a one point six million with one point two from the city, and that was absolutely necessary, sorry, for this to be successful. I'm very happy that I will be able to go back to the neighborhood meeting with Counsel Russell to bring some of these pitches, if you could either email them to me, or email them to the school committee office, and they could distribute to us as a committee, because I do attend those neighborhood meetings, and I would like to have the residents and I stop in the businesses there. As a first-time district school committee member, this was something that was a priority for many months, along with the fact that during my sabbatical, we still had this on discussion in neighborhood meetings. So this is absolutely something that I look forward to, will keep track of, and thank you very much for taking the time to have this presented tonight. Appreciate that.
So, and Mr. Allen, I just wanna thank you to, oh, so, Miss Mail, Member Mailman? No. I was just gonna thank you, I know it's been a while, and, but it's worth having it done right, and, so I do appreciate the effort, and I just wanna thank Counsel Russell for his advocacy and the stress level that he endured from the complaints that he received and, and, as a district counselor. So I appreciate it, and the city manager and the city council appreciates it also, so thank you. No, so, um, Member Mailman?
No. I just wanted to point out that Member Kamara has been on this item in the prior school committee, along with Counselor Russell, so I wanted to mention that, for many meetings and many finance meetings, et cetera. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So we are going, can we file that then, or else?
Well, we wanna hold on to it, because naturally, I want to be...
Move forward to the administration, get it back, is all you want, okay, we'll do that. All those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Okay. Next is administration to adopt the final fiscal year twenty-four budget in the amount of four hundred and sixty-one million, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars, reflecting reduction of eight hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, based on the final state budget, recommend that the administration is accepting the file. Roll call. Probably doing so, Member Mailman?
We're awful close, though, I think. I just wanted to point out that, or I wanted to, we have that deficit because of not enough reimbursement on the charter schools. The state, I think I'm correct in saying, says that they are going to fund us in full for those charter schools. I want to point out that, so this is baloney, that we have these kind of dollars, that because we're not reimbursed from the state at that kind of level, I just think it's a major advocacy item for all of us, and I want to share with the committee that I serve as the urban chair for the Mass Association of School Committees, and I will add this item to that discussion group, because I don't, we're just gonna sit there year after year after year and accept this level of unfunding seems outrageous to me. So I guess I, could I ask the committee's indulgence to support an effort to advocate statewide and at our local level, to, to our state delegation to fix this issue?
Sure. Okay. Okay. So we'll take that collectively, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
No.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next item from Member McCullough, to review the budgetary needs and community partners for wraparound coordinators. Member McCullough?
As it reads.
Motion is to send the budget. All those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Next is the approval and file of the updated calendar of the report of the superintendent. Some motions to approve, all those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Oh, and then to the meeting, and, so I just wanna thank everybody for coming out, and I'm trying to think if there's anything going on this weekend. Member Benanda?
Through the chair, on those announcements on the meetings, is there executive meeting prior to that, or is there no executive on those meetings?
It depends if we, yeah, well, the way that the, the meetings are set up now is that if there is an executive session, it will start at five o'clock, and then we just roll right into the regular meeting, depending how the vice chair works with the court and the items, and how many items appear on the executive session, so. So we try to be a little more efficient, try to time it, what we're trying to do is time it right, so if there's an hour, we'll start the regular meeting at six, but we just don't want people hanging around and waiting for us to come out of a long executive session, so. Okay, so the motion is to adjourn, all those in favor, opposed, so ordered.